Active notice for the saving meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public law of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the deacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. Anyone with a rise for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First one up. Donation from Joseph Michael, Director of Pharmaceutical Operations for Walmart.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Cortolo tonight, so he has been in contact with Mr. Michael.
Great, wonderful. It'll be my pleasure. First, I'll read the resolution and I'll have a couple of comments. Whereas Walmart has made a donation to Township of Lacey for use with the Recreation Department for the summer camp and beach patrol program, and whereas Joseph Michael, Director of Pharmaceutical Operations for Walmart, is donating first aid kits, forty I believe, for use by the Recreation Department during summer camp and beach patrol programs, whereas it is the desire of the mayor and the township committee to accept this generous donation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the township committee in the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey as follows: That the mayor and the township committee do hereby accept the donation of the first aid kits on behalf of the Recreation Department for use during the summer camp and beach patrol programs. Secondly, that the mayor and the township committee do hereby express their gratitude to Joseph Michael, Director of Pharmaceutical Operations for Walmart, for the donation to the Recreation Department. And thirdly, a certified copy of this resolution will be forwarded to the Chief Financial Officer and the Recreation Department. I have here a resolution I'll present to Mr. Michael shortly.
Since you've read the whole thing, can I take a motion on that resolution?
Please.
We'll do that first. Motion on the resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
And Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
All right, it's official now.
Great, so Mr. Michael oversees the pharmacy operations, I believe if I'm not mistaken, from Tom Trevor all the way down to Wildwood for selected Walmart stores. He's a registered pharmacist. I made his acquaintance a couple of years ago. He's been really instrumental in all things public health at the county health department, where he's graciously offered to send these kits here today. Walmart's a fine business partner in our township. They've been a great corporate citizen. They donate to Lacy Day, Lacy Fest. They've helped out other festivals and initiatives in our town in the past, so we're very grateful for that. Actually, one of the initiatives with the county health department that Mr. Michael and Walmart has worked on is Novel in the Country, and it's proof positive at zero cost to a township, or a county, or a taxpayer, that some of these public-private partnerships indeed pay dividends. So when there was a need, we're grateful to have his expertise. He met with our staff at the county health department. He has met with us here with Chief Tabella. He's done some work with Chief Tabella. When I say him, I mean Mr. Michael and Walmart and the entire pharmacy staff. They have now kiosks in Walmarts all around Ocean County, and in particular in our Walmart, where they have advice, information on drug addiction, on drug prevention, on funding pathways. So if they see somebody presenting at one of their pharmacies, there's questions there, there's sympathetic here. In fact, there's a licensed professional and a pharmacist like Joe to help transition that person in. So this is at no cost to the taxpayer. It's a great honor for me to present on behalf of my colleagues up here, everybody, same as everybody, this resolution to Mr. Michael and Walmart. Thank you so much.
These are only two. We've got forty more. Forty, forty. Oh, great. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I wanted to introduce Will Foe as the face of our store here in Lacey.
He's our new manager.
Yes. New manager? Yes. We welcome all our businesses. We make a point of all that. I thank you. And the Recreation Department thanks you, or our township thanks you. We're grateful for the opportunity and really honestly honored to have an opportunity to serve the community. Hopefully these won't be used, but if needed, they're there for you guys. Accidents happen. Yes, sir. Forty more will be used if you come along. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Will.
Thank you. Okay, so we did one and two, right?
Yes, we did one and two.
All right, so number three, special use permit, Purgatory Presbyterian Church, Saturday, April 13th, spring flea market.
Purgatory Presbyterian Church is holding their annual flea market at the church. Excuse me. It's all indoor, so it really doesn't have any effect on anything parking or anything outside, but it is outside the scope of what their business license is, so they do need permission. So it has been reviewed by the zoning officer. I just need a motion to approve.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tony's Workwear, 40th Anniversary Celebration, Saturday, March 23rd.
Tony's Workwear, which is located on Lacey Road here, they are, I can't believe it, but they're going into their 40th anniversary year. It doesn't seem like it's been that long, but obviously it has. They are looking to do a celebration in their parking lot. I provided you with the mapping of how they want to lay out the parking area. It has been reviewed by the chief and by the zoning officer, and they have approved this. They also have supplied me with a certificate of insurance with regards to the inflatable bounce house that will be on site, naming the Township of Lacey as an additional insured with regards to that bounce house. And they will have, from the company that owns the bounce house, recognized workers from that company. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Purgatory Presbyterian Church, Lacey Fish Hogs, event March 9th.
The Lacey Fish Hogs Saltwater Anglers Club will be holding their annual flea market, which they always hold it, on March 9th at the Alx Lodge. They are requesting permission to post lawn-style type signs throughout the community announcing the event one week in advance.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Larry's Codebook.
Okay. Steve, did you want to talk about this?
You can do it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, as you know, we've been talking about code book updates and modifications to the code books, and we have, again, are embarking on another change to the code books with regards to recreational vehicles, boats, or trailers of any type on residential property. As you can see, maybe throughout the community, you may see a trailer, whether a car, a trailer, a boat, that kind of becomes, I'm going to call it, a lawn ornament, or what we might call a shed now because it hasn't moved in years, and it may be registered, may not be registered, and we are looking to now not allow that anymore, that when the placement of those vehicles are on the property, they can't obviously obstruct or impair vehicular vision, or impedes the flow of traffic, and that once it's been there for a certain amount of time and it doesn't look like it's going to move, it's going to have to come into compliance known as a permanent structure, accessory structure on those properties. So again, those recreational vehicles, boats or trailers, if they're unregistered, inoperable, placed upon a vacant lot unless the owner owns the occupying lot, they're not going to be allowed to do that. So they're going to have to come into compliance, just like if it's a shed. So if that trailer that's on wheels, it has become more or less a permanent structure, it will now have to go and get the building permits and the proper zoning permits in order to stay there, but otherwise, we're not going to allow that to happen with boats and trailers and vehicles any longer within the residential properties. And it will all be enforced by the code enforcement officer and obviously the zoning office. Anybody have any questions about that? We've been working on these.
We've been doing these for about two years, these new things ordinances.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
We have a couple more. Property maintenance.
Still coming.
Only two years. Is this the last of them?
I think at this point, this is the last of them. We're still, I think the only one that we have left to look into, because I'm trying to find a sample, is those home-based motor vehicle repair.
Right.
Those that are doing work on vehicles.
One more left.
So we have one more left, and I'm having a tough time finding a sample somewheres and getting wording for that. So if everybody is okay with that language going into the vehicles and traffic section of the code book, I would like to authorize the attorney to have that drafted for an ordinance consideration. We agree with that?
No. All right. That's it. We're going to go right into.
I need a motion to adjourn on this?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
All right, so we're going to go right into the township regular meeting. Okay, active notice for saving meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public law of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Aggie Park Press as a deacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Anyone rise? Pledge allegiance to the flag. A moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Doesn't look like it's a long agenda.
No.
Resolution number one, Resolution 2019-83, appointing a public safety telecommunicator.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Kathleen Nagalo as a full-time public safety telecommunicator trainee for the township, for the police department. This is a replacement staff member for the Lacey Township Police Department. We have lost two through attrition, and this is just a replacement. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-84, awarding a contract for turf fertilization.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to True Green LP for seasonal turf fertilization program for the Township of Lacey. This is a five-year contract. It starts March 30th of 2019, runs through October 31st of 2023. For the first year, it's $28,494, second year, $28,494, third year, $28,494, fifth year, $25,900, and the sixth, excuse me, fourth year, $25,900, and the fifth year, $25,900. We are only obligating the funds for this current year, obviously.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-85, awarding or not awarding a contract to community-wide energy aggregation.
Well, I have good news. The bids were open today at approximately 1:30 with regards to the community aggregation program, and we are awarding tonight.
And we are awarding?
Yes, we are. I didn't know at the time I prepared the agendas what we were doing, and that's why I put it on there both ways, because I needed to do either a rejection of all the bids or an award. So I have good news for those in the public that have been constantly calling and saying, "What are we doing?" We will be entering into a new contract as of June 1st of this year with CNE. Your bills will still come from Jersey Central Power and Light, and you will have CNE on the bottom of the bills, and June 1st is when it starts, and we should anticipate seeing a savings of 11.3%. When the tariffs do change come to the fall, we will be at a savings of around 5%. So it's a resolution of Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to a third-party power supplier to provide electric generation service to Lacey, community energy aggregation participants, and to provide government energy aggregation services in connections with the LCEA. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-86, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to a disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax deduction to cancel 2019 taxes due on a property granted the 100% disabled veterans exception and refunding the resulting credit balance. This is on block 1626.03, Lot 2.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-87, authorizing the refund of a building department fees.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of building department fees issued by the Lacey Township Building Department. These are for solar projects that the homeowners are no longer moving forward with.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-88, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposit help for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-89, authorizing the payment of the township bills.
Resolution Township of Lacey County, of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $787,899.48. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes, with noted extension T0035.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
And Mayor McDonald?
Yes, noted extension of D0400 and H2746. That's two C, yeah, 2746, correct.
Motion carried.
Okay. Motion to approve township meeting minutes of February 14th, 2019.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of February 14th, 2019.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle licenses for the Women's Club of Lacey, Lacey Order of Moose, and the Mothers of the Twin Club, Ocean County Chapter.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Comments from the committee. That be Mayor Kennas.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Saturday, I had a chance to attend my sixth and final daddy-daughter dance at the Lacey Township High School.
Whoa!
That is actually a great event. There's, I don't know, Regina, there's approximately, how many? How many?
Over 800.
Total?
Over 800.
Over 800. Eight hundred people attend. It sells out every year. It is a great event, but as you can imagine, if there's 800 people attending and there's 400 dads there, their first question they're asking is, you know, "I wish they sold beer here." So maybe next year, when I can't go, but it's a great event, Regina. They really do a great job. Is that the PTA?
PTSA.
PTSA. They do a great job there, so that's my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor. Sometimes it's hard, but we lost one of our own in town, which really hurt. We had Daniel Ingless, one of our firemen from Lenoka Harbor. I've known the family for a long time, and they've had a lot of heartache in their family. And their family is part of my family because, as I said, all the volunteers in this town mean so much. And that gentleman, and I'm sure Mr. Flynn could attest to that, was a gentleman and a half, wasn't he? One of the best. So it hurt me. Sunday, we had the service at the Lenoka Harbor Volunteer Fire Company, and I never really got to meet his wife too much and his family, but while I was there, I got to meet them all. And I promised her one thing, that I'd watch over and anything I could do in Lacey Township, and that I'd make a promise to her. She is going to be moving back here from the Carolinas, which I said was great, and if you get to see her and if you know her, please reach out to her. I know it's been one tough for that family and the firefighter family. My heart goes out to you too, Kevin, because I know you were pretty close with them. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Dykoff?
I guess I should jump on that. My heart goes out to the Ingless family and to all the volunteers. Thank you. They give their heart to the township, and they're part of the Lacey Township family. We had our second budget meeting tonight. It's never good news. Been at this now for 15 years, and every year it's a tough year. And, you know, I can be pretty confident that we're never going to say it's a good year, but we're doing the best we can. We are all residents of this township, just like you, and we all pay taxes, and we all answer to our families and our friends, and we all answer to you. And I pledge we do the best we can to make the right decisions for Lacey Township, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Committee of Cortolo?
Yes, Mayor. I have a couple of prepared statements tonight, but I'd also like to give heartfelt, just very sad, with the Ingless family. I remember when I first was fortunate enough to get elected, I went to that firehouse. That was one of the first places I went, and they did a demonstration, and they cut the top off of a car, and I've been to a lot of places since then. I never forgot that, and it was just very sad. It's just the cloth I think we're all cut from when you talk about the first responders and things like that. It's just unfortunate. So I'll try to lighten the mood a little. I think there's some good news, something that we've been looking at for several years. I want to direct folks' attention to our website. We had our colleagues talk about the budget tonight. Budgets are never easy. We try to do the best that we can for employees. We try to do the best that we can with purchases. Budgets are tough things to deal with. But as far as we talk about, when we talk about sustainability in our businesses in town, some great news tonight, and you'll see more of it with your MUA bill. We have gone out, and we really pride ourselves in our local robust economy, the relationships we have with our businesses, and how businesses choose Lacey over other jurisdictions, in and outside the county. There's been interest in several years by different folks, not only up here, but throughout the township as well, about the Estate Card program, wherein if you make purchases, you get a percentage off of your property taxes. But tonight, we found a really great administrator of this program. I'm more than cautiously optimistic about it. It's a quality program. It checks all the boxes for our residents. It's a benefit to merchants that is huge, it's a benefit to our residents. You can earn credit towards a direct reduction of your property taxes at over 3,200 online vendors. Even a bigger benefit to shopping locally, we did not forget the local merchants and the mom and pops that make Lacey what it is. You'll be supporting your local businesses and your township and your own bottom line. So I would say to you respectfully, go to lacetownship.org. It's right on our cover page. Take a look at it. There's, you know, these are purchases, like I had said to the newspaper, that you'd be making anyway. Why not get some credit for it? We're hoping that it's a boon here at the town. There's apps now that can go directly to phones for participating businesses. I want to read this real quick. Along with local government and local merchants promoting the Estate Card, they'll have the opportunity to have their company promoted to cardholders on the program website and on mobile apps. New and existing cardholders will be driven to your store. Participating merchants around the country in municipalities where this program is already in existence have seen higher, have seen an increase in high-value transactions. So I think this is, I think this is good news. If people incorporate this into their budget, there's even an option where you can get some of the direct deposit towards one of these Lacey cards and really begin to see savings and compound interest in it. I'm hopeful that that works. The reason that this is important is because unfortunately, New Jersey continues to lose people to lower tax states. And in just between 2017 and 18, we lost nearly 100,000 people. The high-tax states are a result of leadership and policies. We've had several people speak out on the national scene over the last couple of weeks, and I'll be brief. U.S. Representative Andrea Ocasio-Cortez gleefully danced as 25,000 jobs, $4 billion in wages, and $12 billion in an infusion in the New York economy walked out the door after her incessant prodding, and that was Amazon. They voted with their feet, and they chose to relocate somewhere else. Now you look at what we're trying to do up here with the property tax program, trying to expand an employee force, trying to make purchases and support our local businesses. I think that's egregious, what she did. We can go on from there. Governor Cuomo accusing Representative De Sanctis in Florida of, quote, "stealing his residence." Well, when people are able to keep more of what they earn, that sometimes happens, and it's really unfortunate. So these are policies, and again, I can go on from there and name other names, but I won't because that'll sound political, and I don't want it to. I want to talk about the policy part of it and not the political part of it. These are policies I never want to see permeate Lacey Township. I don't want to see them come in here. I think they're cancerous. I think they're poisonous. I think we're proud of our history. We're a welcoming community. We're proud of our traditions. We like, we make a point of saying Merry Christmas to each other. I don't want to see any of that ever change. I don't want folks like Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez to come in and change policy in our town. I like our town the way it is, and I'm excited about the future. There are my comments tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Committee of Cortolo. Okay. I turn one of the semi-condolences out to the Ingless family. It's always tough when you lose a volunteer. I didn't know the gentleman, I didn't know the family, but everybody tells me he was just a great guy and a great family. Had a lot of tough luck in his life, but always stood tall. And I do want to thank all our volunteers on the EMSs and the fire companies for what they do. We can put our heads on our pillows and go to sleep at night knowing that these guys and gals are going to protect us, and I think that's really, really important. To Walmart, I want to thank them. Fifty of these first aid kits will be used, and it's always good when a business in town makes those donations because we would not, we would have to buy them, and it's maybe only five, six dollars a piece, but those things add up when you start, you know, fifty of them, and you start having to do it, and you've got to do it every year and so forth like that. So we thank them very much. The Estate Card is, this is going to be, I think this is great. In fact, I was in the other day talking to our administrator, and she said, "Guess what?" And I said, "What are you talking about?" She said, "We got a phone call that our neighboring town wants to get, wants the information on the Estate Card." So being cooperative neighbors, we gave them the information. We got a call back about maybe five hours later that they were too small, but could they join with us? And we said, "Absolutely. No cost to us." So a neighboring town, and I don't know if they signed the deal yet or not, so I won't mention their name, will be joining us and promoting our businesses in town, so they'll be having reason to come up or go come down and shop in Lacey, which is always, always a good thing. The budget, this is never a fun time, and I can tell you this, I want to thank, we're not done. done. We're not done by any stretch of anybody's imagination, but I want to thank the Township Committee because tonight, we put a big dent in it. They've worked hard, opened good dialogue. We didn't agree on everything, and that's a good thing for you. We've nickled and dined each other here and there. And once we get it resolved, when you'll know what it is, we think we're going to be where we should be with a fair budget that the township can be proud of. And so again, I want to thank the four gentlemen that are up here tonight with me. And we saw something tonight that I am very proud of. Pheasant Run came out and sat and listened to the budget because they wanted to put their two cents in as to what they wanted. And I would encourage everybody, when we have a budget meeting, we're out here, to come out and talk to us about the budget because it's your money. It's not our money. And while we are very respectful of that, we have the power, and we spend it, and we try to do the right thing. But I think when we get more town people to their input, the better the budget will be. And that's all I have for this evening. So with that, I'll open it up. Comments from the public? Do we have any comments in the public? Yes, sir.
Robert Stefano, Carol, nineteen eighteen, Lacy Road. We've been having a lot of problems with the gun club next to me. I know. I've been to this committee before about it. But now, it's just an issue with just sound. They're shooting every day, high-powered rifles. They're shooting skeets. And to the point, I got everybody in the neighborhood, everybody, to sign a petition to go back to, I have a thing here, they got to sign. Two days a week, they shoot. No, they're shooting seven days a week. And it's ridiculous. We should be able to go out of our houses and have some kind of, you know, peace and quiet. So the petition says, "We, the surrounding residents of the Ground Swipers Gun Club, are requesting the Township Committee to adopt the sound ordinance limiting the gunfire emanating from the ground swipers to the original two days a week. It has been, become a serious problem to our quality of life. They sometimes shoot seven days a week, at times with high-powered rifles with no side impact barriers as required by the state. Hundreds of shells are shot every hour on numerous days. This cannot continue for the sake of all the people surrounding there." Also, wrote another little thing here. It says, "We sincerely request that the ordinance be enacted as soon as possible. Sometimes, other than their scheduled days, about sixty rounds a minute can be heard. High-powered rifles are being used without any side impact barriers as required by the Division of Criminal Justice. That has an accident waiting to happen. This toxic waste site that you do nothing about will someday contaminate our wells as I have no responsible recovery system of lead in place. I went about a year ago or so to address this, and Mr. Quinn, he gave me a political speech about helping me, indicating he would do something for me. Since then, the only thing that has happened is they shoot more. I know it is in your power to limit sound. In town, you cannot have a rooster because of the noise they make. I find it ridiculous that a high-powered rifle can be discharged two feet from a property line, but in town, you cannot have a rooster. They are in violation of many things, but this is one thing you can fix now. Do not let us live in what sounds like a war zone on those days of the week. This is not just my problem, but also all the surrounding residents. Our quality of life is being affected by this, and you need to do something now. We feel we are forgotten west of the Parkway, and the right to quiet enjoyment of our homes is being taken away from us. A lot of members have a key and come and go as they please. They shoot any time they want. They have stated they have about six hundred members. It's a free-for-all. No one sees what goes on each and every day. Warmer weather is coming, and the shooting will increase more as a result. I think as a taxpayer, we should be able to go out in our yards in peace without fear of accidental discharge taking my life or my neighbors, as this is not the case anymore. They need to go back to their regular business hours, Thursday and Sunday, and give us some peace. What we are asking is not unreasonable, but we need relief now."
Can I have that petition, please? We don't have an ordinance against roosters at all in town. Just to get that on the table. We don't. We do not. So just to correct the record here. I don't want that to get out.
That's what the planning board said. He couldn't have one.
No, that's not correct.
Okay. What we'll do is, we're going to go back, we'll have the Planning Board, the Department of Community Development, take a look at this and the resolution that allowed them to have that out there and enforce the original plan. Now, I do know, I can't remember when, they did come before the Board of Adjustments because I think you forced them to hang some nets or something like that a few years back.
I think that's some standard thing after it was eventually just going to happen.
Right. And I think we addressed some of it at that point in time. But I will pass this on to the Director of Community Development. He'll pull the resolution stuff allowing them out there, and we'll see if there's shooting hours that they're supposed to abide by.
We don't have the problem with the two days.
Right.
But it's gotten to the point, there's not one day you can go out there, and that's not.
If they're violating, if they're violating what they're allowed to do, we'll enforce it.
There is, there's no regulation in the.
So there's nothing in their Planning Board or Board of Adjustment Resolution limiting them to certain hours and certain days of operation? Is that what you're saying?
Nothing.
Okay. That's where, that's where that guideline would come into play.
This is also another thing from the Division of Criminal Justice, and what they're supposed to have as far as.
We'll go back and look and see what the record says as to when they applied for the permit to be out there with the, I'm sure, wait, let me finish. I'm sure, I'm sure somebody put in there what their business hours were going to be. I'm sure somebody asked that question, and we'll see what it has to say. If it does not there, then we'll address it, and we'll have the Planning Board look into this. This is, I'm going to tell you right now, this is not going to be a short process. This is going to be a little.
Well, Mr. Quinn said that, and a year later, they just shoot more. So I would at least somebody, I left my email, so at least get back to me.
The Director of Community Development will get back to you. It's not an easy fix doing this. But we will look at this, and I'll, we'll get an email out to you in a couple of days as to where we stand on that. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So we just call you back and?
No, the Director of Community, we'll get an email, or we'll have somebody call you out, call you back on the phone, and go from there. All right? Fair enough?
Yeah.
Anybody else in the public? Jim, go on down.
Let me guess, Jim, you're going to schools on this. You're going to schools on this, right?
No. I could give you a little bit of information for the record, Jim, with Lacy Township. First of all, ground swipers have been there since the sixties when I came down. There was skeet shooting. Skeet shooting, we use bird shots. You don't use high-powered rifles. High-powered rifles can travel a mile or more. So those are things that you have to concern. But since this subject came up, I did some research for someone else who lives out in Creambridge, had a similar situation with neighbors shooting high-powered rifles and stuff. And believe it or not, there is no state law prohibits you from shooting in your own backyard.
Right.
There's a state law that prohibits you from hunting within four hundred and fifty feet of a house, but there's no state law that prohibits you shooting guns at a target.
Right.
It's up to each municipality. You have none. Your municipality ordinance prohibits hunting by parks or lakes, but it's very restrictive. So it's something, and it was a bill by several men, I can't remember his name, but it prohibits salver, salvatory shooting on Fourth of July where people come out with their shotguns and assault.
Right, right, right.
So just so you know, there is no state law. It's up to the municipality to adopt such a law. We're using reasonable guidelines. I mean, if you live on a sixteen-acre farm, that's different than living on a hundred-by-hundred lot. So it is something that you really should look at while you address this issue. But again, from the first day I came down here, it was skeet shooting, or trap shooting, whichever term you want to use.
Right.
Now, the other interesting thing, as Mr. Curatolo brought up, about the people leaving our state. And I had a laugh because I watched Senator Cory Booker and other state representatives last week saying, "Well, we take Amazon in to our state." Well, they already turned down North for a lot of reasons because of, the state wasn't cooperating, North wasn't cooperating. But just so people know, last week, our governor signed a new bill extending Family Leave Act from six weeks to twelve weeks, from six hundred and something dollars to over eight hundred and something dollars, which you're going to see everybody in private sectors get taxed to offset that cost. So that's not business-friendly because if you got twenty, more than twenty-five employees like Amazon, they go broke just on that. There's on Monday, another bill that landed on the governor's lap. I haven't followed up on it because I've been preoccupied with some of the stuff, that if he signed it into law, or when he signs it into law, if you're a private employee, pay very close attention because the state of New Jersey thinks you're incapable of saving your own money. So now they're going to take three percent of your gross salary and put it into an IRA that's going to be taken care of by private sector. Could be Goldman Sachs, maybe. I don't know. But you have to opt out. You're not opting in. So people better pay very close attention in the private industry. And it doesn't matter how many employees. It's every person that is in private industry is going to get three percent tax in their payroll.
Another one, Jim. We were just discussing around budget. The minimum wage is going to affect us from our public employee standpoint for our seasonal workers.
Right.
So we're looking at that affecting our recreation costs.
Well, yeah, the argument too, you know, whether you want to be, whether it's political or not, is when they say we need a living wage fifteen dollars by the federal government. Well, fifteen dollars in the Ozil Mountains is a lot of money in New York City. You know, it's a same pants way, you could wipe yourself with the currency. The other thing.
I left that out of my comments.
It's cheaper than the toilet paper. But go back on the subject of marijuana, where we talked about last meeting and the usage. And I found a very interesting thing online. I reviewed it. It's called cannabinoid hypermesis syndrome.
Yeah, I saw that.
From excessive use or prolonged use of marijuana. And the unfortunate thing, and maybe the Health Department can look into it and bring it to the tensions. There have been deaths. So when people say you don't overdose from marijuana, there are recorded deaths from it. But even worse, in the report, I read that ERs are mixed diagnosing. They're trying to treat the symptoms, which are stream nausea, vomiting, and everything else. There's been over a thousand Goldstone operations in this country thinking that was the cause because people are not going to sit there and say, "Oh, yeah, I'm doing drugs and stuff." So it's something that the Health Department can make more people aware, but I think it'd be great.
I'm on it. We've been on it for years.
And I will be, look on this one, a perfect comment I saw today about compared socialism, say Erwin, their first shot's great, but the rest of your life sucks.
I saw that, I saw that, too.
It only works till people's money runs out.
Anybody else in the public? Yes, Regina?
He's a little tall, isn't he, Regina?
That's better. Okay. I stopped growing in the fifth grade. Regina, Descends of Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. Looking ahead, I'd just like to invite everyone to the next school board meeting on March eighteenth. It's a Monday night. The agenda meeting starts at six. The public meeting starts at seven. Currently, the Lacy School District has seventy-three million dollars in our budget. And this year, there are three seats expiring, and I'd like to invite the public to consider becoming a candidate. The petitions will be out from the county clerk's office in a couple of weeks. The petition deadline is sometime in July. And it's a fairly simple thing to do, to become a candidate. You only need ten signatures and a notary, and you're on the ballot in November. More people need to run, and more people need to come to school board meetings. I'm only one person. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Good evening. I'm Mary Ternetti. I'm the president of CWA Local Ten Eighty-Eight. We represent clerical workers here at Lacy Township. I'm here with some of my members in red today because we want to urge you to bargain a fair and equitable contract with us. Our members are dedicated and work hard to make Lacy Township the wonderful community it is. You have some really terrible draconian healthcare concessions on the table, and our members are really concerned about it. Ever since two thousand and eleven, public workers have seen the pension and healthcare contributions go up, eating away more and more of their salaries. Our members are very middle-class. The majority of them didn't even make as much as forty-five thousand a year. You can't get by living on that in New Jersey. Yet you want to eliminate post-retirement healthcare at age sixty-five, eliminate reimbursement for Medicare Part B, you want to make new employees pay half the premium cost for their families, and move all the workers into a very limited healthcare plan that provides no out-of-network coverage. It's really not fair, and our members just can't afford it. Certainly, new workers can't because they are new and are generally the lowest paid. I want to tell you about one of our members who has worked for the township for thirty-six years. She's about to turn sixty-five years old. Under your proposal, she would not receive any retirement healthcare after thirty-six years of service to the community. Not only that, but her husband is eleven years younger than her, so his healthcare would stop the day she retires. And she has an adult son with severe autism who is non-verbal. He puts his healthcare to him. This is a true story. So what happens? She can't retire because she needs her healthcare, and her family depends on her for that healthcare. You actually propose the disincentive for people to retire. No one in the world would think that was fair. You can ask Veronica. We had what we thought was a good session last Friday. We told her that CWA is willing to work with the township to try to help find some savings. The CWA State Health, State Director, Hedy Rosenstein, is on the State Health Benefits Plan Design Committee, and she is willing to come to the table and help work on it with us. But we hope that you will recognize that these healthcare concessions are just not reasonable and work with us to reach a fair settlement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
See, now, motion to close the floor.
Second.
Motion to zero.
Move it. All in favor?
Second. Aye.
Motion to return.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.